Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Howell Township Building on September 14th, 2021. At 6 o'clock, we have a special meeting this evening, and it's regarding cannabis, and where we should put facilities here in Howell. So I want to say that this meeting is scheduled for one hour. We have people who are going to be speaking, but at the end of the hour, if we're not completed, we will come up with another date so that we can reconvene. But we do have a council meeting at 7 o'clock. So I'm sorry, but we will give you another date. So at this time, I would like to hereby call the special meeting of this council to order.
So Mayor, if I may, this meeting is being held in accordance with Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. Adequate notice has been provided by transmitting the notice of special meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News, and by posting it on the bulletin board reserved for such announcement in the township municipal building, and by filing it in the municipal clerk's office on August 31st, 2021. The agenda is complete to the extent known, and formal actions may be taken. Let us call the roll. Mr. Bonovich.
Present.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Here.
Ms. Richmond.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Russo.
Here.
And Mayor Berger.
Present. If you could please stand for the pledge, and then a moment of silence for all of the fallen members of this world who have died from COVID. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, if I may, we have a few people that we've scheduled to speak tonight. As you've indicated, we're most likely going to have subsequent meetings after this, as we want to try and get both sides of the story. So I know tonight, we've asked the chief of police to come speak first. I know there's some members of the public, if they wish to be heard. We do have a sign-up sheet here that just helps us to organize it. I would ask that you sign up. And then we also have our municipal alliance coordinator, Krista Riddle, available to talk. There are some other members that are here that I know will speak on both sides of it, but our intent is to try and hear all angles of it, so the council can form the best policy as to, you know, what we do want to allow, what we don't want to allow, what areas of town we want to allow it in.
I also would like to read the discussion, because it's very important. It's how recreational cannabis and/or medical cannabis should be regulated, zoned, and permitted for land use purposes in Howell. So that's what we want to talk about tonight.
Yeah, and I'll chime in and say too, I mean, it's really an opportunity for the public to speak. It's not designed to be question and answer with the council. It's a chance for everyone to make their feelings known on those particular subjects.
Okay, if we could get started with the chief. I promised him I wouldn't keep him here all night, because I inadvertently gave him the incorrect time of starting at 5:00 PM. I apologize. It's better I come up here with a full stomach than an empty stomach, right? All right, so good evening. So I was asked to provide some of insight on behalf of being the chief of police of this wonderful town that I grew up in. So I can give you my personal opinion in reference to all this, but I'm not here, up here as a resident, up here as a chief of police, and to discuss the possible effects on law enforcement and policing this community. You know, this is new to all of us, especially here in New Jersey. So usually when a community has an issue involving police, whether it's noise, or whether it's substance abuse, like we always say, there's somebody else that has dealt with that problem before, and there are resources that we could turn to as a chief of police. I have the Chiefs of Police Association, I got other chiefs, I got other people that I can give a call to in order to provide, get some guidance from them. Something like this, though, I don't. So with the retail establishments, I don't. Distribution, the cultivation, the medicinal side of it, yes, which I did look into. I was asked about a year and a half ago, when this first started emerging, to take a look at some issues that other towns may have in regards to some of these warehouses for the cultivation of it. One was in Woodbridge, the other one, I believe, is down in Atlantic County, I believe it was Eck Harbor Township, somewhere down there. And it reported back to me that there was no issues at all. Security is very tight, the businesses are very regulated, the business owners are usually very in tuned with the community. A lot what I see while sitting on a planning board, where you have those business owners come in, the developers, who really understand that they need to work with the community in order for them to conduct business here in town. Looking over some of the regulations under the CREAM Act, and also on the League of Municipality sites, it addresses a lot of issues that, to me, are more related to code enforcement. Signage, location, hours of operation, the odor that may be coming out of the building. So as far as a police stance on this, I don't really see too much police involvement dealing with places out in Denver, out west. The police aren't really involved too much with the retail establishments. We're more concerned about the DWI side of it, the driving while under the influence, and making it easier for people have access to those, you know, to those materials that can potentially lead to driving while intoxicated. But we have liquor stores here in town, those are intoxicating substances, so I think this is something that we're just going to have to accept here in New Jersey, and work with it with the best that we possibly can. So again, that's my professional side of it. I don't see a tremendous impact on the PD whatsoever.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief, when you went to these facilities, or you visited them, or I don't know if you looked, did they have like a camera system similar to the schools, like how they're tied right into the headquarters?
That I'm not familiar with. I've never visited any of those locations, but upon speaking to other people that we have. In fact, I have a close friend of mine who was a retired lieutenant from Alamo County Police Department, who went and worked as a security officer, head of security for one of these large companies, and he said it was a security system that rivaled any type of bank, or any other type of business that he has ever experienced throughout his 25 years in law enforcement. And I know these business owners, they take it very seriously, because they know that they're an easy target. But other than that, I haven't, it's not been reported to me as far as being, you know, there's a rise in crime, there's vandalism, or whatever it may be that would draw police attention, or draw from police resources to this business. You know, we have more problems here in town with live bands playing at some of our restaurants than I think we would with a marijuana establishment. And again, that's just my professional opinion, speaking as a police chief. My views are different as a parent, as a 45-year resident of this town. But again, I'm not here for that.
Chief, if I could ask, Chief, maybe you could advise the council a little bit on the DRE program, where that stands to date, and how receptive it is by the courts?
So, I mean, we all understand the confusing law that was established as far as enforcement of this upon law enforcement. To this day, we still don't have a roadmap. We still don't have concise, basically, a guide on how we do this. There's still liability on police officers, even though that was supposed to be corrected. The law is just not as tight as it should be. And that's why we've taken basically a moratorium on marijuana enforcement, because I'm not going to jam up my police officers for them thinking that they're doing the right thing, and in fact, they're not. It's not happening. We have a tremendous amount of resources dedicated right now to doing expungements on people's, you know, criminal histories. And as far as DRE program, right now, there's, other than having a well-trained police officer who goes through a drug recognition expert training, there's no way really to detect whether or not somebody's under the influence of marijuana while they're driving, right? A urine sample will basically state that, yes, there's urine, and there's marijuana in their urine, but at that time, with the intoxication while they're driving at the time of arrest, a DRE, a drug recognition expert, is the only reliable source in order to determine whether or not somebody's under the influence of alcohol or drugs. So something like that, they would arrest the person on the roadside after giving the field sobriety test, bring them into headquarters if they believe it's either marijuana, or it's a prescription narcotic. Then they would put them on the breathalyzer. The breathalyzer would come up zeros, and then the DRE would come in and do an evaluation, blood pressure, pupil, everything that they've been trained on. Now, the problem with that is that some courts, you'll have some judges, don't recognize that as valid. So that's, it's very problematic, what we're seeing here in New Jersey. Again, they pass it, overwhelming number of, percentage of New Jerseyans voted in favor of it. They tried to put out some laws that are just extremely flawed, and the guidance to law enforcement at this point is just awful. It really is. You know, until they start tightening that up, as far as marijuana enforcement is basically null and void in this town, and then Monmouth County and throughout New Jersey.
And then, how about your canine program? How has this impacted it? I know it's been on the news a lot lately with some other areas.
So prior to that, as me being a canine officer for 10 years, having a narcotics-trained dog that was trained to detect marijuana, fortunately, we saw this coming a few years ago. And we have four canines right now, two of them are not trained on marijuana, so they still can be used out on the road. Our other two basically can't be used. They could be used for search warrants, but for narcotics-related purposes, they can't be used for doing a, around-the-vehicle search, because the odor of marijuana is not illegal, right? We can't search a vehicle based upon that anymore. And a dog is an extension of the officer, so if the dog happens to smell it, then, you know, the dog can't tell us whether or not he's smelling heroin, cocaine, methamphetamine, or marijuana. So those canine dogs are no longer being able to be used for marijuana purposes, or for drug purposes. But fortunately, we have two others that are not trained in marijuana that still can be used, and we saw that coming, so we did that right at least. But there's a lot of towns, I know Ocean County Sheriff's just had it on the news, where they have to retire their dogs, because that's the sole purpose of those dogs, were for narcotics enforcement. So it's a challenge, it's a challenge for law enforcement. But I think what you're going to see is, you're going to see that marijuana is just going to be accepted, just like alcohol is. More of the problem for us is when you have the people smoking it, and next-door neighbors smoking it, and it's coming across somebody else's property, and they have kids, and the kids are being, I mean, that's going to be, that's going to be our issue. Somebody smoking in a condo complex, and it's coming, you know, outside, you know, through the sliding glass door, that's going to be an issue with us.
How big of an issue is it now?
With smoking marijuana?
Do you get a lot of calls?
I mean, nah, I wouldn't say a tremendous amount of calls, no. But what I can tell you this, is that our overdoses on heroin have gone up considerably. And I know our substance abuse expert is here, Krista, who can touch on that a little bit more, and, again, coming from the police perspective. And this is something that we track in our PD, she does the tracking as well with us, and knowing, dealing with our recovery experts. Marijuana is always involved with heroin use, right from the beginning, and right to the end. And, you know, and that's where I, where I, when I became police chief in 2015, I came in right at the height of the opioid epidemic in this town. We were the top 15 in the state for substance abuse admissions. And we fought hard with our alliance, with our community, with our recovery programs that we did. We really brought that number to the point, last year, we weren't even in the top 200 anymore. And we saw it, we saw that decrease. Our officers weren't responding to those overdoses anymore, or at a very limited time, over the past few months. And now, you can claim that the, you know, that COVID had an issue on people's mental health. I do believe that, talking to our mental health professionals. But I also believe there's other factors involved that are making our overdoses spike as well on heroin. So is there a direct?
And you think that's because they smoke marijuana and they use heroin? I'm just asking, I'm not sure.
So, in all of our experiences with investigating heroin overdoses, interviewing the family, products, evidence that's found on scene, we can link marijuana use to heroin and opioid abuse. We can link that. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that every person that smokes marijuana is going to get addicted to heroin or opioids, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, a overwhelming majority of the cases where people have used heroin, marijuana was initially involved.
So would you consider that a gateway drug?
When you have, when you have basically every heroin user that either admits a refined product, and talking to a recovery effort, that marijuana was initially involved from the beginning, can you say that's a gateway? Possibly, but also, on the contrary to that, I'm not saying that everybody that uses marijuana, chooses to use marijuana, is going to end up addicted to opioids or heroin.
So it's not a gateway, it's not proven to be a gateway drug.
Has it proven to not be, or it is proven to be? Either or, can you?
It's proven to not be.
And we have data, I'm sure?
Because there are people that smoke marijuana that don't go onto heroin, so it's not.
Agreed, I said that. But I can only tell you from my experience as a police chief, from analyzing all this, from my detectives that are doing, this is conversations that we've been having amongst our department.
No, I respect that, I just wanted to say that.
Right. And I made that clear, I thought, right?
Yeah, well.
The other thing I wanted to ask you was, I saw the interview that you did with Kravitz on YouTube. So would that interview have been your personal opinion, or your opinion as the chief of police in Howell?
It is both, because of all the issues that we've dealt with here in town, with the heroin crisis that we had, with the opioid crisis.
Because that, I'll be honest, the interview led me to believe that you certainly felt there was issue with legalizing recreational marijuana.
I do have issues with it, I do. And again, it's some of the things that I've already addressed. You know, again, when the residents of this state overwhelmingly approved it, I don't think they understood some of the underlying issues that were part of that concerning the juveniles. I mean, that really extremely handcuffed the police.
I would say that you're 110% right, that people voted on something more than likely without, usually, without knowing all of the specifics involved, you know, just with marijuana use. However, you brought up an interesting issue too, with odor, and when you make a reference to, you know, like a condom minimum situation, where people are very close. So I think to myself, I have a friend that lives in a condo, and she has a neighbor that smokes cigars, and that's a chronic issue for her, because her daughter has asthma. So the smell of marijuana, for sure, is probably going to be at least an issue in terms of odor, I would say, at the very least.
And most homeowners associations, they have those rules in effect, but, I mean, if they're homeowner.
Well, I'm going to say vaping, vaping has no smell at all whatsoever.
But not everybody's going to be vaping, people are going to be smoking.
And they still, and they are smoking now.
Right. But we have to also consider that as well. Chief, I do have a question, I have a couple of questions for you. So I've been told that the marijuana sales is cash business. So as big proponents of public safety, how do you feel about that aspect of the marijuana business being a cash, you know, is it, you worried about criminals, about robberies, and all that stuff?
You know, personally, I don't think it's any different than our financial institutions that we have here in town, as far as a bank or other businesses here that deal with large volumes of cash. And we do, besides banks, we have several businesses here in town that deal with large sums of cash that are flowing in and out on every day, and it's not an issue.
Okay. And how about the position of the New Jersey Chiefs Association, the State PBA? How do they, I know that you're the president of the, yep, so where is their stance, and the other chiefs in the area that you know?
So as far as the PBA, I can't give you too much guidance on that. State chiefs, again, we were involved, and also the county chiefs, we were involved in basically trying to right the wrong of the law that was passed that basically handcuffed the police, actually handcuffed the parents as well. I mean, it was just awful. And I know that there's some, you know, there's a fix going on with that, but it still hasn't reached our level yet. As far as, and again, this is not something we can, we can talk about, the cultivation warehouses, we could talk about the medicinal establishments, but as far as retail establishments, it's not something New Jersey has really dealt with. So there's no other type of guidance that we can, we could turn to, except for at a state.
But would you agree that, and I don't know, I'm just asking, there are restaurants, there are so many establishments that only take cash, right? They only take cash, would be in a similar situation?
That's to my, that's to my concern. It was just a question to put on the record, I'm not saying I agree with it or not, I'm just asking, at that, at this level, I mean, it's something to consider, I mean, we're a public safety, law and order township.
But do we put that on the other businesses that only accept cash? That's my, that would be my question. I mean, I'm sure that if you go to Target, many people spend cash. Do we put that same burden on Target that we would put on that, to say that it's a public safety issue?
But again, that's why I posed the question to the chief. I'm not saying.
But I'm asking you if there's a difference between those two.
Well, it's cash only, right? So it's only cash, people, they'll be targeted, in my opinion, they'll be targeted because they know that they're cash only, and that.
So another business that says no credit cards, cash only, is not under the same target?
And making the kind of money that, that, I mean, we can do this all day, Mayor, I'm just throwing out questions, well, yes, actually, you could, but, thank you, Chief, that's all I had for you, thank you.
You got one, Tom? I had a quick one.
You can go.
Simply, really quick, you know, I see this as multiple layers, like you said, medicinal, agricultural. I think it's going to be a bunch of ordinances. And one, you know, you said you have lack of enforcement. Someone comes in from another town, they're smoking in a playground, they're smoking cannabis in a playground. What can we do about that? Anything?
Yes. So we did get issued guidance from the Attorney General's Office in relation to that. So let me just, I'll just read to you what our guidance is as far as somebody that is smoking, basically, in public. And it basically applies to the same statute about regular smoking cigarettes in public applies to. Also, the guidance that was provided by, under the CREAM Act, also states that townships can regulate that a little bit further, right? So someplace like, if we have here in town, here with a private, you know, private property that rents it out.
Swim club.
Yeah, whatever swim club that may be, they can allow it on their property, they can do that.
But as far as like Purple Park, or something like that, we have the right, or we could introduce an ordinance just to ban that, or put some summonses, or something like that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I do have another concern. I realize that the federal level, our ordinance was always fashioned after the federal level that said no to the marijuana. So where are we, where are we then, at that point in time, unless all the federal guidelines have changed?
Can you say that again, Councilman? I'm sorry, I missed that.
My understanding is our ordinance was always modeled after federal guidelines.
Our original ordinance was adopting the federal stance on illegal drugs, illegal substances. That was basically done away with this legislation. And as part of that legislation, it invalidated our previous ordinance, and we had up until, well, I guess, 20th or so, to pass any other restrictions.
So that legislation is guarded by the fact that we dealt with that in a timely fashion?
Correct. So I'll read to you here, "Can a municipality prohibit the consumption of cannabis on public property and in public spaces? Generally, an adult 21 years of age or older can use cannabis on private property where property owners allow, swim club." The CREAM Act does not permit people to smoke or vape cannabis in any public place or in indoor public spaces, as defined in New Jersey Statute Annotated 26,3D-57. Public smoking laws also apply to cannabis smoking, and municipalities may enact additional restrictions on public consumption."
So that's a good spot to start, as far as protecting the playgrounds, or children, and stuff like that. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, if the council has no other questions for the chief, I would suggest, if you want to go ahead with the members of the public that have signed up, we can jump into that.
Mr. Keegan, I have one quick question, and I think it was touched on before, about detection when it comes to a DUI situation. Is there anything in the works right now, being looked at, in terms of like a device or something like that, that you know of, that's being worked on?
The problem is, yes, there's things that detect it, but it's just not approved for law enforcement to use, such as, I mean, if people watch TV, you'll see the portable Alco tests being used by police officers out on the road to do a preliminary sample on somebody's breath in order to determine whether or not they should bring them in. That's not allowed here in New Jersey.
Do you foresee it being allowed in the future? I mean, it's a whole.
What, other detection devices for marijuana?
Yeah, something.
I believe so, I believe so. I do. And.
Isn't it part of the reason, because marijuana stays in the system for a longer time, so even if you smoked maybe 25 days earlier, you could still detect it today, versus if I'm drinking, you'll detect it, because I just drank?
Right, that's why the DRE program is so vital. And again, fortunately, we've been a department that has sent officers to be DRE-trained for many, many years. And when we started seeing this starting to emerge in Jersey, we started sending additional officers. So we have those. So we have the non-marijuana police dogs, we have officers that are trained as drug recognition experts, we have all that. So as a police department, we're well situated with that. And, you know, the people that are going to abuse the marijuana, the people that are going to be, they're still going to be doing that, right? You know, and as a chief, I struggle with this. I was pretty heavy on narcotics enforcement my entire career, it was something that I took very much interest in, and then as a chief, on the recovery efforts of our opioid victims, right? So it's a struggle for me to come up here and either condone or condemn something, I mean, it's here. I think if people want it, they're going to go to surrounding towns anyhow to get it. And I don't think that you're going to, I don't think it's going to be a huge detriment for this, as far as on the police department.
Thank you, thank you for your candor, I appreciate it.
And you can be available again in the future if we have another, more questions?
Yeah, I mean, if anybody wants to ask me questions in the audience, they can ask me as well.
Okay.
I was wondering, so in a park, if you put a sign, and someone's smoking marijuana, how do you enforce that? Who enforces it, how?
I mean, we would do that, that would be probably an ordinance violation. We would have to amend our ordinances to include marijuana. I'm actually looking up our current smoking, and it only pertains to tobacco, and it doesn't address outdoor smoking, like as in a park, so.
It's antithetical to vaping as well, I believe.
So there's a number of, a number of ordinances that are going to be before the council to address this.
Like I said, it should be, you know, there's going to be a slew of ordinances, and maybe that's the first one we could tackle.
Because I just asked that question in light of the marijuana backwards part, I think you were referring to that, with like, how the police can actually enforce marijuana if someone has marijuana on them? Because it's no longer arrestable, so it's just a fine, is that what it is? Because even if a minor is smoking that marijuana in a park, the police can, are very limited in what they can do. So what is the outcome of someone smoking marijuana in the park, aside from a sign and a fine? I'm just curious.
Well, that's part of the problem with the law.
Yeah, the law's still flawed. Yeah, the, the law's still flawed. The law advises that we, we shall provide a notice of warning. But there's no centralized system for that right now. The Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office, they're designing a, a system that we can use here within Monmouth County, but problem is with howl, we're surrounded, half our town's surrounded by Ocean County. So if we have somebody that's been, you know, juvenile, say, that's been offending, and Brick comes to Howell, comes across into Ramtown and offends at our park, we have no way of knowing, you know, whether or not that, that juvenile husband has been warned. So it's, 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 it's very problematic with us.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, because I kinda know the law is flawed, and it has a long way to go. So I'm just saying, at this point, if we were to allow in Howell and increase accessibility, you know, and someone's smoking in a park, what is the reality of that? You know, the law is only on our side.
But I can also tell you this, drinking in, in our parks, we don't really have a, a big issue with that, either. We have several parks, several, several softball teams, probably the biggest offenders are probably the police softball team.
Yeah, but that could be because it's a behavior that people are used to not doing.
So, so you realize that no one under 21 can walk into these facilities, right? So no one under 21 is gonna be able to buy out of that facility.
But youth use is up, so it doesn't matter, they're still getting it.
Well, they're getting it, you don't think kids are getting it illegally now?
With the lowered risk perception, increased youth use rises. That's a fact. Center for Police Control and Prevention, SAMSA, it's a fact. So lowered risk perception of acceptance and accessibility encourages youth use.
And alcohol is not, is better than this?
I'm not talking about alcohol, I'm talking about marijuana that was just legalized. Alcohol's been legal for hundreds of years.
Not for kids under 21.
So it doesn't matter. The police, they have, they have been limited-
I know, I understand, Krista, the law. I realize that. I'm not, I'm not arguing the law with you.
Their current law with marijuana now has limped on underage drinking. So police can't enforce like they could. Am I correct?
Yep.
I'm not arguing the law.
No, I know, I'm just presenting as the substance use prevention coordinator and mental health awareness coordinator for Howell, my perspective on the law and asking questions.
And, and for years, as far as, as, as the police are involved, I mean, we let juveniles, motorists with small amounts, we've, we've looked the other way. We've told them just crush it out on the side of the road for years. I, I did that many, many times. The underage, the underage drinking, how many times have we've called up parents, come pick up your kids, they've been drinking, we're not gonna lock them up, deal with them at home, don't make this happen again. So it's something that we've been doing for a long time. Most police departments do that. But then, obviously, then they put all these restrictions on us, and we can't notify the parents, and the officers can be civilly liable, criminally liable as, as well. So everything that we were doing, right, because we don't wanna be tied up with all the nonsense calls, the little bit of marijuana, the underage drinking, we all, we all did it. So, you know, our officers recognize that. We've, we've, we've given, given that same consideration to our, to our, our young adults for, for a, a long time. But then this came in, and prevented us from doing that.
Right.
Maybe I'm being a little too honest, right?
Anybody else have any questions for our chief?
I just have one request. Laura Sotrell, representing the owners of Merrick Farm, 144 Merrick Road. So Red Bank recently adopted an ordinance allowing certain cannabis licenses in industrial areas and some of the retail spots. One of the things they had in their ordinance was a requirement for security cameras, and they made it a conditional use, so you still had to go before the planning board to get site plan approval. Would you be in favor of, of something similar, if the, the town were to consider something, allowing maybe a grow facility or something along those lines, of having a full-scale security system? There's, the Red Banks requires them to be able to give access to the police within, you know, immediate notice. So it's not monitored by the police necessarily, but ultimately, again, they have access to it. I thought that was a pretty good idea. I would like to have your thoughts.
Mayor, if I can interject, we're getting a little bit into the weeds, weeds here, unintended. We need to figure out what we want to allow and where we want to allow it before we get that far deep into it.
You did say that.
I didn't mean to cut you off, sir, but that's kinda getting very involved in the actual operation that, that's putting way before we're at, at this point.
Address Mr. Luttrell, we brought that up in the very beginning of the meeting. The chief went to a couple places, and he felt they were very secure. I'm, I'm sure if there was something, he'd be open to any surveillance possible.
Yeah, hurry that. I, I just wanted to clarify that would be something, you'd be open. I mean, I respect his opinion. I've been a part of him many times.
Yeah. Anytime we can have direct access to, to surveillance video as quickly as possible, obviously gonna be beneficial to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, if I may. Ed McNamie? Thank you, Chief, very much.
Thanks, Chief.
I hope Brian bought you lunch, because, I mean, dinner. He may just stay here.
Hi, I'm Ed McNamie, and partner on the Merrick Farm, in Merrick Farm Road here. I want to, number one, thank all the members of the board for having this meeting again, because the last time we had the meeting, I, I left the meeting and I said, what just happened? I said, they just voted no and never took time to say what did they vote no for all six at once, and no discussion why it was. So I hadn't realized, I put together a whole conversation, I had not realized that we're now at the point that there is consideration of doing it, just don't know where. I, I do agree with the chief that it's in Red Bank, it's in, it's Long Branches kind of has said nothing, so it's in Long Branches, in Tom Jervis, in Aberdeen, it's in, it's in Neptune Township. So anybody can go ahead and drive to those places and get it, and come home and smoke it at their house. So I don't, you can't prevent it from happening because the law said you're gonna have it. So the question is, is that, do you wanna be involved in somehow? And you don't have to sell it, you know, do you wanna grow it? You wanna manufacture it. If you grow it and manufacture it, it's closed, it's not open fields, it's in a closed situation, gotta have security, gotta have the cameras, it's gotta have all the things that you would want to have. And the manufacturers and the cultivators cannot sell it to the public. They can only sell it to wholesale, they can sell it to a, a, a place that sells it, they can sell it to a manufacturer. So if you wanna really control something as far as saying, I don't want to be known as a place that you can go out and buy all these things, then you could say, I don't want that. But why would you wanna go ahead and lose 2% tax on all of the sales? Our partner, which is from the state of Washington, he, he is gonna do $10 to $12 million worth of sales in the state of Washington now, so do 2% on that. He's willing to have some partners that he worked with now that work with manufacturing, that are doing it in the state of Washington. That, another, again, another revenue. You'll also go ahead, then, you'll charge, as other places have, fees for filing, fees for the application. Persay, I think, has $20,000 fee a year for the, for the cultivation, and for $10,000 for the retail distribution. I'm not talking about retail distribution, I'm only talking about cultivation. And I'm only talking about going ahead and doing manufacturing. Both of them are enclosed in it. We have a big farm, it's far away, 66 acres, all right, so I don't think it's gonna cause it's, I've been told some people don't even know where Merrick Farm Road is, all right? So it's off to the side. So it's kinda quiet, and it's kinda hidden. In fact, one of the young ladies we have working in the farm said, and she's lived, she grew up in a township, she never knew about Merrick Farm until she got the job over in Merrick Farm, Merrick Farm Road. She didn't know anything about Merrick Farm Road. So I don't know if you all know it. So also too, is that every acre that has to manufacture or grow cannabis no longer is under the tax of the farm. It has to be at regular full tax. So you have a chance to increase your revenue on each of the acres if you allow things to happen. I, I took the liberty of sending to all the board members a letter that is from the state of New York, that the partition, anyone going ahead and do, anyone offering, prescribing, a practitioner, medical marijuana has to take this course. And what I did is that the course was focusing not on that you're in the weeds, not that, that you're a dope addict, it talked about the 14 benefits that you can have for going, for going ahead and using medical marijuana. I've since, before that, I had sent, I think only to the mayor, it's my fault, I located it today when I was putting my notes together. South Dakota has now said, I don't want 14, I have 17 reasons that, that marijuana can help people. So it is here, you're not gonna prevent it from happening, it is here, right or wrong. It's gonna be in the town next to you, and they're gonna go buy it and bring it in. So do you wanna go ahead and get any revenue from it or not? Somebody is. And by the way, just because you said yes, does not mean it's gonna happen. 37 licenses for each of the six, 37. My understanding is the 12 medical marijuana licenses will, if they apply, and I think they will, get 12. So now we're down to 25. And then we got conditional licenses and full licenses. So if you look together, which I initially put, on, there were 565 municipalities, if you take 37, a 7%.
Mr. Merrick, I, I hate to interrupt you, but you're at your five-minute-
I am? Well, thank you very much. I didn't know I had five-minute limit. I saw the police chief talk, I thought I had. But that's okay. Thank you very much, your opportunity.
Mr. McNamie, I just, I just wanna say, I received your letters, and thank you for them, and very informative. When we passed that ordinance, we only had 180 days. It was not against you. Wasn't against any farmers. It was, it was a, a way for us to make the right decision. So we could have agriculture, so we could have cultivation. Recreation seems to be, we have an issue with that. So it was not against you.
I didn't say was.
Not intentional.
Didn't think it at all, and it was.
And I still look at this town as a farming town. So thank you, and thank you, family. Since 1908, I read the letter. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, folks.
Hugh Giordano?
And to provide enough time for everyone to speak, I'm gonna remind everybody to please keep their comments to five minutes.
Yeah, I'm, I'll make mine shorter than five for everybody. Hugh Giordano, from the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, UFCW. I was at the last meeting, and I went over the good jobs that are created. So I won't touch on that. Again, I think I did a pretty good job of making that clear, of what type of careers that come out of cannabis. I do wanna couple, touch on a couple things, because I am in these facilities a lot, so I understand how things are ran on a business level as well. Today, currently, a lot of these facilities now have ATMs inside, so you're able to get cash on premises. And the second thing is, is they allow a debit card transaction now. There's a way to do it through debit card. You can't use a credit, but you can use a debit card now. So that is a, something you can put into your guidelines to help protect workers, patients, and adult use consumers. The other thing on top, I just wanted to just kinda clarify, the Department of Health and many other states, and these are health professionals, people with doctorates and went to health school, much more intelligent than I am, medical school, have said that cannabis is a, is a way off of opioids. It's a, it's a, it's a way, it's part of opioid use disorder. You can get your medical card for that. So it's an exit drug. There's lots of studies that, you know, we could go back and forth on studies. I, you know, real quickly, I found a study that said the teen use went down, and this was a conjoined study by the University of Montana, University of Oregon, Colorado, and San Diego. And they did a joint say, study saying that teens went down in regulated markets. So it's one of those things where I think the chief did a really good job of saying it's gonna take community action, right? Taking the action to set up non-smoking areas. And one thing to remember is that a medical cannabis patient has a legal cannabis card, can smoke or ingest their cannabis in smoking areas. So it, but again, they cannot do it in a public park if you have a ban on it. So you won't even have, you won't have patients do that either. And patients are pretty respectable about that, because it's for an ailment. I wanted to just say that, you know, zoning is, is gonna be an issue. I know there's lots to talk about smell. So one of the things that's considered is having cultivation and manufacturing done in an area where you can't smell it. And I think that the last resident that came up and spoke about his business brings up a good point. You can decide where things go, and you can take the time to do that. And I, like you said, you banned it, so that you had the opportunity, take the time to do that. Also, the new technology that's out, specifically in HVAC, is gonna create good union jobs for the trades as well, but they have brand-new technology that's coming out, and they're finding ways to deal with the odor and the smell. So if you hold the applicants accountable for those types of things, and you pick good applicants, I think you'll get that, you won't get resistance on that at all. You won't. I don't know any employer, whether they're a major MSO or a micro, that's gonna fight something against smell. So they will work with you. In closing, because I don't wanna give other residents an opportunity to speak, I wanna suggest ordinances that are based off the city of Bayonne, once again. Bass River adopted it, Montclair adopted it, Highland Park adopted it, is it, I think it was Somerdale, or Somerville, I can't remember, but they also adopted the Bayonne ordinance as well. So I think that's a good starting place, because it deals zoning, application fees, and all those issues that affect zoning and the safety and health of residents. And part of protecting residents is protecting workers as well. And we hope that you'll consider a merit-based application system, like these other towns and cities have done. And Bayonne was that model. And all those towns and cities that I mentioned, those boroughs, are all different types of geographical settings. One's on the beach, one's a small, one-mile-long town. So there's, there's ways of coming up with it and doing it. And I appreciate the work of council, and you kept your word. I gotta say, I was here at the last meeting, you said that when this came up again, you would bring it up, and you did. So that's leadership on your end, and I'm glad to see that. And anything that we can do to help, the UFCW supports these good jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, are we gonna have an opportunity for Krista Riddle to come up, so that the, so that people all hear all of it, so they can respond to all the information we have tonight? Or, I mean, how, I thought we were gonna hear the, the professionals and then re-
Well, it's gonna be rough to do it that way, because we're gonna have multiple meetings.
Okay.
So for this one, I promised to get the chief out early. We were gonna allow for any public comments, and then I was gonna have Krista come up in conclusion.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the public know that there's more professionals to speak, and that the information is still forthcoming. That's all.
At this point, we have 15 minutes. And on this list, we have four additional people from the town that want to be heard.
So why don't, we know we're gonna have another meeting. Why don't we have Ms. Riddle come up? And then, at the next meeting, we can have more of the townspeople address the council.
Well, I have to say, people have come to the meeting, they wanted to speak, so I, I would think that they should be able to speak.
You run the meeting. If you want them to speak, you let them go right ahead.
Are you willing to go into council meeting to finish this, plus Krista?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are we willing to go over the time?
No, I think we need to stick to our timeframe, because we're gonna keep doing this. So I think that-
Lisa Dowd?
We can take a vote, if that's what you wanna do.
Hi, my name is Lisa Dowd. I live at 93 Merrick Road. I actually do know where Merrick Farm is. And I would totally trust them to grow marijuana. I just, you know, I had the opportunity to live in a state where marijuana was legal, and I've had the opportunity to go to several different places of business to purchase marijuana. And I think there's a lot of misconceptions that everybody's talking about. It seems that everybody just thinks that you go to a marijuana store, and you're just gonna buy pot and roll a joint and sit around and smoke it. You can buy edibles, which a majority of people do. I mean, there are not a lot of people in marijuana shops that are just buying pot. They're buying edibles, they're buying different things you can drink. I mean, it's not, it's not just people in there, you know, buying pot to go home and roll a joint and sit on their patio and smoke it, and the smoke blows into somebody else's, you know, patio. It, it's not like that anymore. So I think there's a lot of misconceptions about what is sold and how it's used. I also have to say, you know, the majority of people that I've seen in marijuana shops are seniors. They purchase marijuana because they don't wanna take opioids, they don't wanna take drugs, and they're in pain, and they find it eases their pain, their arthritis, other things. I mean, the place I used to go to to bar marijuana, the lady who worked there was like 80 years old. And she would go back to her community and tell everybody that lived there what a great thing it was, because it eased her pain so much. So I think we're putting a lot of onus on, you know, teenagers are gonna do it, and kids are gonna do it, and people are gonna become drug addicts, and it's really not like that. The people who are buying it are people- The people who are buying it are people who are my age, who are older than me, who are seniors, who are looking for alternatives, because they don't want to use opioids. They want to use something else. And I think there's a lot of misconceptions out there about how safe it is. And, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel here. There are plenty of other states and towns that have done this for years. So, you know, you need to go to a shop and see how it works. It's very safe. There's a security guard outside. You walk into a holding area. You have to give your license. There's cameras that are watching you. You have to sign in. They will let you in. There's a certain number of people that are in the store. They let you in when that number is adequate, and you can go in. There's an ATM machine if you need to get cash. People don't walk in with, like, wads of cash, saying, "Oh, I'm going to just, like, buy a bunch of pot." So it's very secure. It's very safe. I have never felt insecure going into a shop to buy anything. You know, there was security, there were cameras, everything was monitored, they had my license, you know, there was video. I have never experienced a problem. So I think we're trying to reinvent the wheel in some way, and we don't have a real understanding of what other states are doing, who have been doing it for a long time. I mean, California legalized it. I lived there for many years when it was legal. I didn't go to the park, and people were sitting around smoking joints. That never happened. I never experienced that. I never sat at my house and smelled people smoking joints. So I think there's a lot of misconceptions, and I think we need to move past that. This could be a great opportunity for our town to get revenue. I mean, other states are making millions and millions of dollars. Think of how wonderful it would be if we could lower everyone's taxes in Howell, because we were selling marijuana and we were making a profit.
So the reason that we're here is to talk about how we should regulate it, and how we should zone it, and where it should be permitted. I think that's what the discussion tonight is about.
I understand that. I just think that there's a lot of misconceptions about...
I'm not arguing the fact.
...what's being sold.
I absolutely agree with you, and I've visited, and I've seen operations in multiple states. So I hear you. But I think, with all due respect, where there are other people that want to be heard as well, and it's really about the zoning, that that's what we're talking about this evening?
Yeah, and I think our town has plenty of places where we could sell it safely and zone it, and we could have the ordinances to make this happen. So, you know, I think that we don't need to reinvent the wheel, because, I mean, I can tell you, in California, the places where you would go buy it, where the shops were, they were industrial areas. That's where they were selling it. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Eddie Pringle?
How you doing, guys? Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Eddie Pringle. I'm 31 years old. I grew up in Howell and graduated in 2008. I just heard what you just said, to the level of the lady that just spoke. I don't know exactly zoning and regulation-wise, but a lot that I have to say, it has a lot of effect on why certain things should be zoned in certain places. And a lot of the things that people are scared about with children, and, you know, and shopping plazas, and where retail should be allowed, I think after hearing me speak, you might, the scaredness might go down a little bit. So a little background on me. I come from a law enforcement family, very old-school. So when I left my career to get in the cannabis industry, it wasn't so ideal for my father and my family at first. But growing up, I was friends with athletes, I was friends with the troublemakers, I was friends with the high achievers and the scholars. And when you're growing up, you tend to fall into the friends group that is most relatable to you. So when you get deeper into high school and things get competitive, I really struggled deeply in school, sixth to 12th grade. And that's when I got diagnosed with ADD, ADHD. Subconsciously, something gets put in your mind, you know, when the youth is diagnosed with something like that. And with my parents' love and care for their only child, they listened to doctors' advice, they put me on medication, as of thousands and, you know, millions of kids are across the country. It didn't work for me whatsoever. And I kind of just gave up on the traditional schooling route and began to hang with the friends group that was easier to escape, which led me to my first encounter with cannabis. And I liked it, you know, but the guilt and shame kind of put me, and the hiding it from my parents or the police forces, put me in positions where I could get in trouble, you know? And I thank God that I haven't been. But throughout the years to follow, I had a few close calls where I almost put myself in that position. And I've been to dozens of my friends' funerals. When I walked in the room, I saw the opioid crisis chart, and the deaths in this community has affected me deeply. That kind of woke me up in my life, and, you know, I didn't want to escape anymore. I had to figure something out. I fell in love with the restaurant industry. But again, you'd be consumed from your surroundings. So I love, I thrive in chaos, but in the restaurant industry, everyone knows that there's a lot of booze around, and you kind of, you get sucked into those kinds of environments. So to fit in and keep doing what I was doing, I always got compliments. I dealt, and I fed the Monmouth County prosecutors, I, you know, fellow mayors. I've been to Italy with the mayor of Belmar, and, you know, if anyone has any questions of my intentions for future and the people around me, you could give an ass to them. So when I realized when COVID hit, I kind of took a step back and realized, what am I doing? I'm working half the hours, and I'm waking up feeling like crap, you know? What are you doing? So I saw you get your medical card pretty easily, so I decided to get mine. Originally, it was just to be able to have it, but when I went to a dispensary, and it was in Belmar, New Jersey, it's over an hour, hour and a half away, I spoke to a girl, she was 21 years old. Everyone was smiling, that was working. And she gave me the advice, and I told her what I wanted to feel, you know, anxiety, anti-anxiety, ADHD. She gave me the advice that was needed, and she deals with the same things, put me on a routine. And when I used the products that she was educated about, which is kind of, she educated herself on it, because there's no facilities around here yet where the scientific research and education is available for the public, it clicked with me like this. And last thing I wanted to do was booze. I didn't want to escape from anything, because it truly deeply helped me be okay with myself and be who I want to be, you know? It didn't get me high, it didn't get me elevated. I didn't want to disrespect anyone around me. I just wanted to better myself and help other people, you know, accomplish what I did during that time. So when I got my medical card, I left my career shortly after, and I've been back and forth to California and Washington and Colorado since, learning, again, because there's nothing in New Jersey where I can learn. So I'm doing everything in my power to make it happen. I'm from Howell. So any doubts one may have about regulating it and putting it somewhere, if you don't, if there's nowhere in New Jersey, or, I mean, in Howell Township, for people to learn about it and trust, and get it manufactured, and have the testing here, and have the retail here, people aren't going to want to drive a half an hour, 25 minutes, and go to a store and buy it. They're going to go to the illegal market, you know? And the first time I saw other substances in my life was going to get some weed when I was younger, and other stuff was around. So not having a retail place, in my opinion, it's easier access, because kids are always going to be able to find what they want to find. And they're going to have to call somebody that's, you know, either they're going to drive a half an hour away to go get their stuff, and who knows, they might smoke on the way back.
Mr. Pringle, you need to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay. Again, I think it's, I think the illegal market, it gets enhanced if the townships don't regulate it. And the last thing I want to do is see any of my peers, you know, pass away. And I think cannabis is a big thing for this township. And it'd be a shame if I couldn't pursue my dream in the town I grew up in.
Thank you. I have two additional people on this list, and we have three minutes to the end of this meeting. So I will ask again, can we complete this list? Or what is the council, what would the council like to do?
I'd be okay with hearing from the last two.
Thank you.
With two people left and five-minute segments, you're asking for 10 minutes, and I think that's reasonable.
Thank you.
Larry Luttrell?
Good evening, Mr. or Ms. Mayor, council members. My name is Lawrence Luttrell. I represent Merrick Farm LLC. I'm also a property owner in town, Block 146, lots 25 through 30 on West Farm Road. Two things. One, I ask that the board approve the ARE zones to have as a conditional use, allowing Class I and Class II licenses. That is the cannabis cultivator and the cannabis manufacturer. Because the manufacturing essentially is, it's like making essential oils. That's all they're effectively doing, is extracting the oil from the plant. And why do I say this? This is a farming town. Howell makes known, and its ordinance said it's a farming town, it has a Right to Farm Act that implements and makes stronger the right to farm, more so than the State's Right to Farm Act. However, under the state statute, if you didn't ban it, you would have allowed this to be a permitted use, because of the state statute overriding it, in every industrial area, which means we'd have these giant warehouses popping up all over town, like there isn't already enough of them now, and creating these giant growhouses. And I think that takes away from the farming. So I applaud you for actually banning it, because I think it gives you now the leverage to be able to do it your way. And so I asked it, and one of the ways I've seen it in other towns is a conditional use. The great thing about a conditional use is you still got to go before the planning board for site plan approval, and you specify the conditions of what you want and how you want it when they're coming in. Building height's no higher than X, right? A minimum acreage of, let's say, five acres or something, which is a typical farm. A buffer for any residential areas, obviously further than 1,000 feet away from any school or public park. Things of those natures that would require any applicant coming in, like my client, to go before the planning board. I've been before your planning board many times. You have a great and dedicated planning board, right? They really take to heart a lot of the ordinances you have in place here in Howell, and there's quite a few on the environmental side. So I would ask for that. It's an easy fix. And why am I rushing in that context, other than to try to get this through so everyone's out? Is because time is now. I know you can't do it today, but ultimately, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission published their rules in August. There's a comment period that they were exempt from having to do, but ultimately, those rules are going to go into effect in 30 days. So sometime this month, those rules will be in effect, and then they're going to open the application period, and that's it. That application period, maybe it's open for a month. And then, if it's still banned by that point, it's gone here in Howell, at least for the next two years, because they're not going to reopen it up again. So I think it's a fairly easy fix. You've got a very intelligent attorney here. You could certainly craft up an ordinance such as that. It doesn't have to deal with any of the other aspects. There's obviously concerns that probably still need to be worked out with the retail sales, and where it's going to go, and how are we going to do it? Because those bring in traffic. The manufacturing and the cultivation, no traffic. Why? You can't sell directly to the consumers. You can only sell to the other five licensees that are permitted. And the other thing, which is really the huge part, if we have the opportunity, we don't even know if we're going to get it. There's a 7% chance, even if we get all our ducks in a row and get it. But at least we got a shot to have a spot here in Howell that we do. And if we do get it, it's a minimum of $10 million a year when the thing's fully running. That's $200,000 in sales tax revenue if you adopt the sales tax ordinance right along with it. I know this board knows how it constantly, like, every town struggles with hedging up against the ever-increasing numbers. You know, healthcare always goes up, all these other things always go up, cost of living benefits always go up for all the employees. So that $200,000 could be put to good use. I just ask that you at least take care of that one aspect as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Winters?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am new to Howell. I've been a New Jersey resident my whole life, but I am new to Howell. And all I'm going to ask very quickly is that, as you're making decisions about regulations and ordinances, if you would consider allowing microbusinesses in with those regulations, because they are great for the community, they are 100% owned here, and I know I'd be interested in doing something like that. So while you're discussing things, if you can just consider that as well as part of the regulation.
Could you explain that?
Sure.
For everybody here?
So instead of having larger conglomerates come in from out of state, it allows for local residents to have full ownership of a small business. And I'd be specifically looking for microbusinesses, with state approval, of course, in the areas of cultivation, processing, wholesale, and delivery. And so it is not one, I don't think, of the big Class 37 licenses that are out there. It would be local. It still gives the 2% back to the town, but it is the way that someone like me, who doesn't, I don't have the big local farms and stuff, but someone like me, who just has a family that's new to town, can also get involved with business with the least amount of barrier to entry. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Krista, would you like to come up?
Sure. What, hold time limit?
No, Mayor, we need to adjourn and move into our regular session.
Do we? I thought we had till 7:10.
No, 7:00.
She's going to take more than 10 minutes, I think.
Could you promise to take five minutes?
I will get in what I can. You can stop me at five minutes, and I'll resume at the next meeting. How about that?
So that's actually 4 minutes and 30 seconds, if you start now.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Myself, to those who don't know me, I work for Howell Township. I'm an employee. I'm a substance prevention and mental health awareness coordinator. So I see the difference side of the coin. Everything I say tonight, and in my continuous presentations to the town, because I think that what I have to say is fact-based, and we should be making decisions in Howell for our community that are fact-based, evidence-based, and research-based. And everything I say is. It's not my personal opinion. All of my data is from peer-reviewed government organizations, Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Surgeon General, National Institutes of Health, and I can go on. But my main concern is the lack of a potency cap. There is zero potency cap in New Jersey on sales. Youth are using the higher potency concentrations. They are linked, there is causal data linking that to psychosis. So when we make our decisions, we need to be careful as to how the regulations are laid out. The state has no potency cap. So when we rush to do things under a regulatory commission that has not set all of the regulations yet, I think it's dangerous. So I think that we need to take our time in considering all of the data. The, also, as Chief Kudrick was speaking to, law enforcement's role in underage use and prevention is very limited now. So when they do see a youth using, they cannot just go up and, you know, send them to their family and arrest them. There's limited protocol. With a lowered risk perception and normalizing marijuana or cannabis use, there are one in the same, one is legal, one isn't, but you can't differentiate between the two, if you have it in front of you. When we normalize things, we increase the risk to youth and risk of youth use. My concerns are the loose and nonexistent state regulations across many areas of legalization, the high potency, no potency cap, black market sales, which according to DEA research, the black market flourishes under legalization. Okay? They can undercut, they're not paying tax, no matter how much the tax is worth. I also want a detailed cost-benefit analysis. We say it's going to bring in all kinds of money. Well, how much? What's the overhead? And where's that money going to go to? Is some of that going to go to prevention and underage awareness?
What, I'm sorry, overhead? Why would we be...
Overhead, there's a ton of overhead involved in legalization. So you're going to have to hire staff as far as, let's see, monitoring compliance, law and zoning enforcement, drug recognition experts, hiring extra staff and staff training, use of community resources, and extra burden on town professionals. Administrators writing the ordinances is a cost to the town.
We do ordinances all the time.
The CFO is going to have to be involved with tax collection. It's an increase in cost. There's more duties assigned to people. So it is a cost. People don't work for free here. So I want a benefit, a cost-benefit analysis of how much the overhead is of legalization versus what we're bringing in. Is our town going to make a profit?
Could Lou do that without having that information in his back pocket? Could you do an analysis without having the financial...
That's part of the problem.
That's part of the problem. We don't know how much revenue is going to be generated by this. I know, Mr., one of the gentlemen said $10 million, but we don't know.
But wouldn't we use another state as a guide? I mean...
We can use other states.
I'm just going to use my time, because I know I'm on a limit. Also, other things, police, fire, zoning, OEM, code enforcement, and first aid. All will have to have specified training to deal with the things. Poisonings go up, underage poisonings from consuming edibles. So, all of these need to, I'm just saying, we need to make it educated from every viewpoint and not candy coat things. It's very nice to hear people's personal stories, but that's not data-based or fact-based or research-based for whole numbers of people. And youth use is skyrocketing. We're in the middle of a mental health crisis. We're in the middle of a opioid crisis. We're in the middle of a teen vaping crisis. And, you know, mental health is, is a paramount concern right now. So, we have to think of all those things without the potency cap. So, I, I don't know. Is that a consideration? When we think about legalizing in Howell, the fact there's no...
Do other states or other townships have that already?
The state has a potency cap, and they're fighting to do that now retroactively, and they're, they're meeting with resistance from retailers, but they're seeing the effects. Youth are using the higher potency. They're dabbing. They're using butter, shatter, the oils, and they're, they're 50 to 99% purity THC. So, those are things we have to think about when we legalize. And I do want to know the over, the projected cost of legalizing and how much we really are profiting.
45 seconds.
I have a question for you. I'm sorry. I just have a question. So, would you, would you have the medical marijuana separated from...
Well, it's a separate issue.
Just hear my question.
Sure.
Thank you. So, would you allow in the medical side the higher potency and on the, on the non-medical side, on the recreational side, less potency?
That's, that's beyond my capacity to speak, too.
So, I was, yeah.
But also, the FDA has not approved THC for many medical conditions. As you probably know, there's only three that are FDA-approved. So, and I like to differentiate decriminalization, recreation, and medical, because they're three separate issues.
That's why I have to...
And I think, you know, in hearing from the public after voting, a lot of people voted for legalization, but they don't know what they voted for. They didn't know that they were going to tie police officers' hands with underage drinking as well as underage marijuana.
Nobody knew that.
Right, but those are the laws we have to function under. So, we need to consider all of that, and especially our youth, when we make these decisions. So, I think a good place to start is a cost-benefit analysis to see exactly what it's going to cost our town to legalize versus what we are going to bring in. Because it's great to spit out millions of dollars of numbers, but what is it really going to cost in the end? So, that's something I, I would want to say. And I know I have limited time, but...
And time is up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Krista, thank you for coming. Will you, so you'll come back if you have more, you have more information for us?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I will have the...
Great, thank you.
Do this again.
Mayor, can we schedule our next meeting?
I was just going to ask. Can we do that, the October 12 meeting?
Well, do we have a second meeting this month for council?
Yes, we do.
May we incorporate...
I think there was something that had to be done.
I'm sorry?
Well, we did not have an executive session in lieu of that, and we will need that with our next meeting.
So, can we just, can we do both?
So, we can do it to the October meeting?
I would move it to October.
The first October meeting?
Mm-hmm. 6 o'clock?
What, what date is that?
October 12, Tuesday.
October 12.
Well, instead, I'm sorry. I don't think an hour is, is, this just isn't working, one hour. So, can...
Why don't we do a series of meetings? I, I pictured this discussion to be a series of meetings that's probably...
I do, too.
I, I think that October 2nd in a month, I mean, these ordinances are coming out every day from every other town. We're, we're learning a lot.
Yeah.
Who's putting fines on for what? Who's doing what? Who's doing just medical? Who's doing rec, you know? Every day, something new. So, I don't mind one hour a month. And let's, let's figure this out. Maybe it's just agricultural first and medical. Maybe it's just, you know, watching playgrounds.
So, may I ask a question, too? So, if, if we, if we all, you know, talk and we think that we can just start with cultivation, start there, or talk to Matt, you know, zoning, I know is a big issue, too. Maybe we tech, piece, little pieces at a time?
I agree. I agree.
We can start, at least get, if, if we're going to allow for the farming or the cultivating, we can at least get them where they need to get. And then, the other bigger issues, maybe we can rate them on a scale of the importance and the problems, and we can work backwards like that.
Didn't seem like we had a problem with medicinal or recreational.
No.
I mean, as, as cultivation and agricultural, so...
Correct. But that would be obviously up to our professionals. So, but I think that's a good place to start if we can... But I would leave medical high on the list. Yeah, sure. Yeah, medical cultivation. So, we can, we can reconvene about this, right?
I like to see the no smoking enforced on the playgrounds of public. I'd like to see the agricultural side, and I like to see the medicinal side. I mean, you know, whether this is the town of Shake the Tank, right?
So, so to, yeah. So, so to avoid, you know, people coming out that this doesn't affect, because it's only going to affect, say, can we, when we do this and plan the next meeting, can we, like, focus, laser focus on, like you said, either medical, so all the medical professions can come out and the people that it affects this way, you know, people who have other issues, a micro, micro, whatever, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and the micro, the micro is a whole issue in its own.
That's part of it. Yeah, but maybe we just pin it down to certain things for each meeting?
The micro is only 10 employees, 2,500 square feet, and there's no cap.
Wouldn't that be fair, Mr. Clark? No? Okay.
That's going to be rough with scheduling, as we found with this meeting.
It's going to take it a long time.
I, I mean, a lot of the issues are tethered together. So, if you're talking about agriculture, there, there's, under the regs and under the law, you can permit outdoor agriculture. I can't imagine anybody in their right mind would be in favor of that, no offense. But then that raises the old bugaboo in this town, which is warehouses. So, now you have two issues tied together.
Right.
So, I don't know what the right answer is on that. So, we can start teasing stuff apart. Microbusinesses, I know that there, right now, there's a cap under the regs of 37 for cultivation. There hasn't been anything established for retail, wholesale, et cetera, et cetera. Microbusinesses will never have a cap. There is no cap on the number of licenses that can be issued to microbusinesses.
Correct.
So, that's a whole other category that we kind of have to deal with in the context of every class of licensing that might be considered in the town. We can try and take them one at a time, but it's, you know, there's going to be a lot of drift ultimately.
Well, we can schedule it and then work on the agenda or topics or however you want to do it as we get closer, to be fair to the public at least. Well, I guess, but the thing, I think part of the problem is that it's opening up, and you have one month. Yeah. So, I think that if we're interested, we should have a...
That's not entirely true, no offense, but they're going to be taking applications during the two-year period as well. I mean, if the initial 37 cultivation licenses are issued during that period, they may not expand more. But depending on the interest, depending on whether the, what the market demand might be, I mean, this is the state. They can change the rules if they want, right? So, I, I wouldn't be too, you know, wired into that notion that it's, you know, irrevocable.
So, there's no sense of urgency, is what you're saying? I mean, there is, I'm, I'm...
There isn't. There isn't. I mean, I, I think that if we do this, we're going to want to do it right.
Respectfully disagree. I think there is a sense of urgency. Okay, that's why I'm asking the professional attorney here. He's saying there's not. That's why I...
I, I think we want to do it right if we do it here. It's, it's going to be here for a long time, once we legalize any class, and it still doesn't change the fact that the law is flawed from a police enforcement perspective. So, we're always going to have that. We're looking at potential liability for our officers, criminal and civil. There, now, there you go. That's going to increase our litigation and legal costs. So, there's a lot that we need to examine.
May I, may I ask you a question? Is, it's, whether we sell, we allow the sale in the town or not, right?
What do you mean by sale? Do you mean retail?
If you allow, if you allow retail in, in the town, or if you allow any level of this in the town, is it any different than if you didn't allow it and it coming into the town?
Yeah, sure, because now you have a, now you have a point source for it, and you may have more interaction between the police and people there. So, yeah, it is different.
Well, again, it's not children that go in.
You asked my opinion. I'm sorry. It's, it's different in my opinion.
Okay. Respectfully disagree.
Before we go, may I?
Please. And then we got to cut it, because it's 7:16.
Yeah. I, I believe that we don't have even enough information from the public. I mean, we've had a few people speak here tonight, you know, but I think that we need to hear more from the public as well as other professionals, other than Ms. Riddle. And I had asked if there was possibility of bringing in people that were versed in cannabis, whatever those health officials are. I don't, I just don't feel as though we have enough yet. Maybe...
I think we're all in agreement on that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but I don't think an, an hour before the next meeting is, is it, I think we need...
That's one of a few.
Yeah, I think that's what Mayor Russo was saying. Yes?
Yeah, I, I envision this to be multiple meetings.
Not only, not only that, I mean, we have to do our own due diligence as well. I mean, you should be investigating yourself what, what's out there.
As we all are, I think.
I'm just, I don't know. Okay, like, can we just pick a date where we can move on?
I would say October 2nd with the one hour. Let's start there.
12.
No, October 2nd.
12, that's right. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
So, then...
We're jumping.
Okay, yes.
October 12 at 6 o'clock PM.
October 12, thank you.
And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will take 12 minutes, so that if anybody needs to utilize the restroom, please do so. We'll be back at 7:30 for a regular meeting. Thank you so much for your patience, and thank you, everyone who spoke.